Are you unmuted?
Me?
Are you unmuted, Ron?
Is that better? Okay. Okay, we have two meetings, a regular meeting and a special meeting. Should we put them together, or how would you like to do it? Okay, so could everybody stand and salute the flag with me? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I just wanted to point out, like you had mentioned, that we do have two agendas, one special meeting and one regular meeting. And so the item, there's one item on the special agenda. It's a closed session item, so that would become 9.3 on the regular agenda.
Okay.
Can we approve those agendas separately?
Yeah, yes, I can. 9.3 if we do, okay. Okay, I'm gonna ask for the first meeting, our regular meeting today. Is there any, do I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make the motion, or second, whatever.
Do you guys use your mics so we could hear both of you?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Care to make a motion for the, to accept the regular meeting? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Motion carried. Okay. We have a regular meeting, okay, for the special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the special meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I would like to say that we already dealt with this. Why are we here again?
Okay, there's, there's been a motion and a second, but go ahead and speak, go ahead now.
This is obviously a personal, personal attack on me. There's no reason to be having this, no action to be taken. We have council meetings, so council can take action. The city business, council cannot take action on this. There is no litigation. If the mayor Protem wants to find out things, we have a city manager. If the mayor Protem wants to find out things, we have a city attorney. We don't make meetings, so we can handle them in private and have other council members have to be kicked out. There is no reason to be having this meeting whatsoever. Absolutely nothing can come out of it. This is obviously personal. I have a stack of 385 papers at home, 385 pages long of things that Greg Cody has complained about me. And now, in the last three days, I'm at 388. When is this gonna end? When are we gonna stop just giving in to this guy? It needs to end. It needs to stop now. We cannot have a mayor Protem who calls a meeting every time Greg wants him to. Greg said, "Take immediate action." The mayor Protem got up right away and said, "Yes, sir. I'll take that immediate action for you." And here we are today, a second time, doing this, wasting the city's time and money for no reason at all. Nothing can come out of this. Again, if you wanna know what's happening, you talk to the city manager or the city attorney. Or you can ask the mayor. The mayor's been here for 20 something years. I think he would know if we needed a special meeting or not. But the fact that your first two items that you've done on council is to call meetings against me tells us a lot about where you are. And I'm tired of it, and I'm not gonna keep dealing with this. And this is almost as though it's pre-planned. Greg sends an email. Hour or two later, we get another email for a special meeting. Just because Greg said to. Enough is enough.
Would you like a rebuttal?
Yeah, I'd like to talk for just a second. This part of the meeting, I need to be heard on this. It's not a personal issue for me. I'm new to this, and as soon as I seen litigation, I questioned it. Doesn't matter, it shouldn't matter what citizen or person actually brought this forward. It's something that I would like to know. I did reach out to the city manager, asked her, "What do we do?" And me looking through the code of conduct said that I could actually call the meeting. I probably should have called it for tonight, instead of an emergency one. I didn't know the routine. I'm still learning this. But it's something I need to be heard on it, so I can express what my concerns are. That's it. It has nothing to do with personal stuff. It really doesn't.
There's no litigation.
Well, that's, that's what the meeting is for, so.
Well, there's no litigation even discussed.
I need insight exactly what's going on.
There's no litigation to even discuss. We knew this was gonna happen before you got here. We knew that you were in the camp, in their camp. We knew this was gonna happen, and here we are. We're dealing with this stuff all over again. There's no reason to be having a meeting. You're having a meeting on purpose. There's things that wanna come out of this meeting that wanna make me look bad. And it needs to end. We know that there's a relationship there. There's no reason for this meeting. Nothing comes out of it. There's no action to be taken. If you wanna know things, you go to the city manager or the city attorney. You could have asked the mayor. The mayor's been here for 20 something years. I think he would know if a special meeting was needed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
My apologies, Mayor. I didn't catch the second.
Okay.
I second.
Okay.
Manny made the motion. Horn made the second.
The second. Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
No.
Councilman Atkinson?
No.
Mayor Ramsey?
No. Okay. That meeting's off the table. Go to a regular meeting. Number two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. We have one. City staff and Caltrans joint presentation, date Route 33 and 198 rehabilitation project and complete street components. Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. We wanted to bring this to you, just to kinda give you a brief overview of the rehabilitation project that Caltrans is gonna be undertaking in the next few years on Polk Street and Elm Avenue, kind of in conjunction with a lot of the improvements that the city's been doing on our end. And we wanted to definitely, we wanted to showcase the project and kinda give some details on some of the changes that'll occur on Elm Avenue, in terms of the safety improvements and a lot of the changes that you'll see, and then also a lot of the improvements that we're gonna see on Polk Street, Fifth Street, and Elm Avenue. And so I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Diana Gomez, who's the district director for District Six. And she's gonna introduce the rest of the Caltrans team, but I also, but I wanted to give them an opportunity to kinda provide just a brief overview of some of the improvements that we're gonna see. Where it's in the kind of infancy stages of the project, however, this is gonna be a pretty impactful project in the city. And so we wanted to start early and, you know, kinda advise the citizens of, and the council in terms of what improvements are gonna be down the road, as we, we're pretty excited about these projects, so. Diana, I think you're a co-host now, so you should be able to talk.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm really happy to be here. I was recently, well, seven months ago, I was appointed as the Caltrans district director for District Six. And before that, I was at High Speed Rail, and so I'm happy to be back here as the Caltrans district director. So we're really excited to be here today. Our team here is going to present on a rehab project along 33. And this is, we're really excited because we, we listened to in terms of what the city wanted, and we made those changes. And so we, we really took to heart your, your input, and so we really wanna go over that this evening. I will also be reaching out to the city manager. I like to start meeting, you know, at least every six months or three months with the city manager, with myself and my team to talk about some of your concerns, some of your issues, and then also just so we can provide an update on, on what we're doing and, you know, answer any question that you have. So again, thank you for giving us the opportunity. And these are the kinds of things we wanna be doing with the cities, specifically small cities like, like Kalinga, and just listening and hearing your concerns and making our projects work for you. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeannie, the project manager, who's gonna give you some details along with the rest of the team. Jeannie?
There. Can everybody hear me? Now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
We can hear you.
Great, thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeannie Wiley. I'm the project manager for this project. I've got, I'd like to share a PowerPoint presentation. Here, I'm actually learning how to do Zoom real quick. Let me go ahead. Is it? Oh, I won't be able to. Host disabled participant screen sharing. That's okay, I can, I can talk about it. Just to give you a little bit of the backstory is, late, late last summer, we were given an opportunity to compete in a statewide for funding specifically set aside for addressing active transportation needs for small rural communities such as Kalinga. And, you know, it was really great timing because we already had this rehab project on the books that we had just started. And so we were, I just wanna say that we were very thankful to the city and to Sean Brew because you already had an active transportation plan that you had worked on. And so we teamed up with the city, and we came up with a whole complete streets design and component tree to put into our application. And it was very quick. We only had like six weeks to do it. And it was, we were competing statewide. Thirty-eight projects were submitted, and only 13 were selected, and only one in District Six, which was Kalinga. So we're very excited about this project. We're very excited to work with the city of Kalinga and with Sean, and to have this opportunity to improve, to improve your streets. The schedule for it is that we plan on having a draft project report and environmental document out by this October. The final project report and environmental document in January, and somewhere in between that time, I'm sure we're gonna give a public presentation and hearing so that the community can see exactly what we're proposing. We'll have everything ready to list by February of '24, and we'll go out to construction that same summer. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our design engineer, Mike Stavropoulos. I believe I said that correctly, Mike, right?
Yeah.
And I'm very, very happy that we could engage you early in the process and that we can continue with our engagement with you, the city council, and the city of Kalinga. Thank you.
Jeannie, can you start, try sharing your PowerPoint again? I think we can do it now.
Oh, okay, perfect. Screen. Do you see it now?
Yes, we do.
Oh, great, well. So we're here in the PowerPoint presentation now. And I'll go ahead, and Mike, if you wanna tell me to go ahead, here are some complete street elements that I wrote down. But go ahead and introduce it.
Yep, howdy, everybody. I'm Michael Stavropoulos, the design engineer. I'm just gonna touch on some of the elements of, of the project. And if, if you could, Jeannie, I guess go to a slide, I can start at slide five with the aerial map there.
Okay.
And let me, let's see. All right, so as, as Jeannie said, we have a project on SR 33. It's a two-hour project to rehabilitate the highway through the city of Kalinga. And the project begins near approximately Merced Avenue and proceeds through, all the way through to Los Gatos. So that's kind of outlined in red, and then there's just kind of a footprint to the, to the right there. So we'll be excavating approximately one foot of existing roadbed and replacing it. So, next slide, please. So we are proposing to include a number of complete street elements that have been incorporated into the city of Kalinga's active transportation plan. The source documents for these improvements include ATP's cycle three and five, as well as past Safe Drive to Schools documentation, and in addition to correspondence and meetings with Kalinga city engineer and design consultants. So like Jeannie said, we've been working closely. The complete street items being proposed will require additional operational and geometric analysis by Caltrans, but they're briefly summarized as follows, and we can proceed to the next slide. So here is Polk Avenue near Merced Avenue. We're proposing to eliminate a number of sidewalk gaps. So this is one item. Next slide. Additionally, highlighted in red, faint red, there's Polk near Hatchman Avenue. Next slide. Polk near Fifth Avenue. Next slide. Then we've got Elm Avenue near Baker Street, and next, we've got Elm near Walnut, and we can proceed to the next slide. So as part of this project, we're also proposing to include mid-block crossings with rapid flashing beacons to enhance pedestrian safety. So there are a number shown here on Elm Avenue north of Baker Street, as well as near Truman Street, that I think you can see includes some Refuge Islands. On the next slide, we show an additional mid-block crossing on Elm Avenue, and this is near Walnut. So, next slide, please. So this is, this was prepared by one of the city of Kalinga's consultants. It's depicting Class II bike lanes that would be included throughout the project length. And in high-conflict areas, that Class II bike lane would be painted with a, with a green contrast striping. So this, as mentioned earlier, would require a road diet on Elm Street between Fifth and Cambridge. And this would also include bowl bouts. So there are some challenges with these types of pedestrian safety, which include drainage, as well as accommodating truck-turning movements. But this is what's being proposed in the project. Additional items include ADA improvements, including curb ramps and, and crosswalks. Efforts would be made to maintain access to local businesses to minimize any, to minimize any potential impacts due to construction. So that's, that's, that ends the summary of complete street elements.
Great. Michael Navarro, do you wanna take a moment to talk about the safety elements and the benefits for doing, for doing the complete streets and the road diet?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things that, you know, we've talked with the city over the years is trying to make it safe for all users and of all capabilities and abilities through the city of Kalinga, recognizing this is a highway, but it's also a main street where people will actually bicycle, they'll walk, they'll frequent businesses. One concern we've always had is the, when you introduce a mid-block crossing with a four-lane cross-section. That's something we've talked about with the years, where people are crossing the four-lane cross-section. The crosswalk is unprotected, it gives a false security, and it recognizes a much safer opportunity with the, with the road diet to do these enhanced markets that we're proposing throughout the project. I think what we did right here would just kinda summarize a few of them. But you see, like, for example, this picture from the, the diagram, you'll see you have a good buffer bike lane to help separate the bicyclist from the traffic. You have enhanced crosswalks to make it more visible for the pedestrian crossing the street. What the bowl bouts offer, as Michael mentioned, there are some challenges, but I'm sure we can work through them in conjunction with the city, but with the bowl bouts, you offer a much shorter crossing distance, so that way the pedestrian's exposed to traffic for a much shorter duration. And then throughout the project, there's, I can't remember the exact number, but there's rapid flashing beacons also to alert the driver of pedestrian crossings as well. So we do think this will provide a lot of enhancements that really transform the main street through Kalinga, make it much safer for bicyclists and pedestrians. And, and like I said, we think operationally, we think even with the, with the reduced road diet that, that will have adequate capacity on the roadways, and it'll make it a much safer place for people to frequent, you know, and shop as well, so. Again, I do wanna thank the city, I, I think, just wanna, do wanna thank the city, this is only made possible for us to get this complete street reservation, I refer to it for the amount of 2.4 million, because the city did have a very transformative vision going back a few years, and you were in a position for us to we put together a very competitive application, and we do feel this will be a strong benefit, and as our director mentioned earlier, this is the kind of project we really wanna see to take advantage of the township opportunities to really enhance your community. So by engaging you guys, we really wanna keep you engaged throughout the process, rolling the environmental stations that Jeannie mentioned, but we will continue to work with the city closely.
Thank you. Do you have, any of the council members have any questions for us?
Counsel?
Yeah, I do. Quick question, is this, this picture that you've got up here, is this showing what it's gonna look like at Fifth and Elm or Sixth and Elm?
That was, I'll answer that, cuz I, this is part of our ATP. This is actually a concept that was done in front of the old courthouse. Unfortunately, based on the project scope, won't include that segment, so basically, cuz it was, it comes down Fifth, the complete streets road diet is gonna be from Fifth and Elm to Cambridge North.
Okay.
So this section is just a concept. As you can see, that would be the intersection at, I think that would be Sixth and Elm. And then the direction of the vehicles would be, that's facing south, going toward, almost towards Sixth and Elm right there.
So they're gonna, are they gonna put one on the corner of Sixth and Elm right there too?
Not yet. That would be, that's gonna be a future project, so. Their scope is gonna be from basically Fifth and Elm to Cambridge. On Elm is the only area they're doing the, the road diet. Fifth Street and then Polk Street will still remain the same as it is now.
Okay.
They're just gonna be doing rehabilitation on those, those segments.
When did you say you expect this to start?
Construction would start in 2024.
And is there any way that we can get an email of the slideshow that you presented today?
Sure, I'd be happy, more than happy to.
Awesome, thank you.
I can, just let me know who to send it to, and I will.
You can, you can send it to me, Jeannie, and then I'll send, I'll forward it over to Adam and the rest of the council.
Okay, great, Sean, I will.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had, Councilman Ramirez, yeah, I had another question. You, you said this one's for Fifth, Fifth and all the way to Cambridge, right?
On Elm Avenue, yes.
Okay. I remember like, two years ago, about two years ago, I mentioned, see if they could get some of the lighting beacons right there by, I believe is, where Tropicana is at?
Yeah, and so that, that'll be definitely a conversation. I've talked to Mike several times about, you know, as we start getting into the design phase, looking at where we're seeing people crossing.
Yeah.
So we can put those crosswalks in locations that actually people are illegally crossing right now.
Yeah.
And unsafely crossing, so the goal is to try to talk about those and put them in locations where they're crossing, not, not 100 feet before or after where they may not use it.
Exactly, yeah.
But yeah, those, that'll be part of the discussions as we, as we get further in, is talking about that and finding out where we can refine those, those locations for those RFBs.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because that'd be pretty great, because that's where mostly a lot of kids that go to, where, District Four, or Glen and Apartments, they all cross right there by Taco Bell and Tropicana. And not only that, now that the DMV is getting individuals from out of town, they also cross the street right there to go eat or anything like that, you know, it would be, it'd be nice if we had something for them too, for the safety right there.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at that, and we also did a Walk to School Day, if you may recall from, and we did the ATP a few years ago, and that also, kind of, we watched and observed where people walked.
Exactly, okay.
So that was, we have some of that information too, but yeah, we'll continue those conversations with Caltrans.
And, and another one, I don't know if I, I didn't catch it right there on, on Polk, where Kalinga Market's at, where the, the development of the elderly apartments. It'll be, I don't know if they have something where they could also put, um, some.
We have a crosswalk proposed as part of Polk Street.
Okay.
So their, their limit line, so I'm not sure if you're familiar, but when you're coming Polk, coming down to Polk, and right when you hit the senior facility,
Right.
the state highway goes down Fifth. We own the rest of Polk Street.
Awesome.
So from what I recall, the Polk Street project that's gonna be starting soon, we actually revised the scope to include a crosswalk. I'll verify with the city engineer, but to actually have a crosswalk from that location with some sidewalk gaps that we're fixing, so you can get that safe crossing to the, to the actual market there.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you, thank you so much.
No problem.
And with flashing lights?
Yeah, usually, any of the, any of these on the, on these heavier traveled roadways, we're typically putting the RFBs across there, just to kind of alert drivers.
Okay, Ray, do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you, thank you so much.
I have one too, one more. Just on the flashing lights, are there gonna be any of the ones that are actually on the roadway itself?
No, and they'll probably tell you they don't, they won't put them in. But they're, they're really, they're difficult on maintenance because of all the traffic that goes over them. You're replacing them, and they're extremely expensive. The RFBs, I think are actually more visible, I mean, sometimes they couple them with the, the lights in the roadway, but it's all gonna be just the ones on the, on the side, and they have particular standards for the RFBs installation, on the installation of those.
Yeah, we, I just wanted to make sure that we can take care of these, cuz we've already had some problems with the flashing lights not working here, the ones we just put in.
Yeah, the, actually the contractor, the contractor's coming out, hopefully in about a week, to take a look at those. I think it's mostly attributed to the trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Marissa, do you have any questions for them? Okay, well, thank you very much, and Sean, go ahead.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
Look forward to working with you guys. Okay, next, we'll go to item number three, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and a report. Shannon, do we have anybody?
Yes, we have a couple people who have their hands raised on Zoom, and then I have several comments that were submitted prior to the meeting.
Okay, are they for the regular meeting, or were those for the special meeting?
Mayor, I just want to, sorry, I just want to say, I confirmed with the city attorney, and the emails that we received via email for public comment didn't specify. It just said for tonight's meeting. And still, the public has the ability to make comments for anything within the jurisdiction of the council, so it would still be appropriate to read those comments.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, Shannon, go ahead, and it's your ballgame.
Okay. The first one I have is from Chris Wallace. To all council members, I, like I'm sure most of us, were hoping for a new start this year with a new council. I was hoping we would finally get a council who would work together and find solutions to our many city issues like animal control, code enforcement, gang activity, homelessness, horrible road conditions, and fiscal responsibility. And yet, here we are again, watching the same old inciting name-calling legal threats from the same two people who have continued this for years. And now it seems they have recruited the mayor pro tem to continue this nonsense. When are we going to draw the line? At what point is enough? I have not always agreed with Councilmember Atkinson. We have had some hard-thinking debates, but he does have the best intentions for Colinga. He doesn't deserve this constant barrage of threats, insults, and slander. It is beyond stalking and frankly, a little disturbing. It's like these people thrive on conflict and turmoil. They are drawing us into their sick obsessions. It needs to stop. We are watching all of you and how you handle, yet again, this nonsense. Please do your jobs, put Colinga first. The next one I have is from Scott Netherton, owner of Real Time Entertainment. I would like to address the Colinga City Council about two issues. First, I would like to address the constant defamation battle between former councilwoman Tanya Stoltz, her significant other Greg Cody, and District One Councilman Adam Atkinson. Enough is enough. It is time for this council to rise above all of this and put this community ahead of their own agenda. A large portion of this community believed a fresh start is what we were getting in this past election. Fresh faces, new ideas, and progress. However, this dark cloud just will not go away. I would ask that the council take into consideration that only councilmember who has made himself accessible to anyone in the community, regardless of these ridiculous district lines drawn onto maps, is Councilman Atkinson. Some members refuse to be on social media because of the negativity and backlash, which I can 100% understand. However, this is the platform that a large portion of the world has chosen to use for everything from news updates to advertising to catching up on small-town business. While I may not have always agreed with everything that Councilman Atkinson has said or done, there is no denying that he has been the voice of this community for the past year, especially during a time when so many were fighting against the survival of small businesses in California. Has he ruffled feathers? I am sure he has, but every day he proves that he is working in an effort to move Colinga forward. There have been court cases and restraining orders and threats and accusations. Enough is enough. Until a lawsuit is filed, ignore them. Allow them to do whatever they choose to do and worry about it when that happens. They are not looking for a resolution, they are looking for a payout. There is nothing this council has been able to do in the past to stop the harassment, and there is nothing to be done now. If they have a case, let it play out. If there is evidence of wrongdoing, don't hide in closed session and sweep it under the rug. Relevancy is all that is being sought after. I ask that you do not continue to give it to them. Please get back to what you were elected to do. Improve, protect, and lead our community. Secondly, I would like to request that an agenda item be considered to discuss reopening council meetings to the public. City Hall is open, there is no reason that council meetings cannot be opened up for public attendance. I understand that the number of people in attendance would need to be restricted due to social distancing guidelines. However, a good answer to this would be to open up a lottery-style system. If you would like to be considered to attend Thursday's meeting, you must go to City Hall by end of business Wednesday and place your name on a list. Thursday morning, a certain number of names can be drawn, and only those people would be permitted to attend. You may not have your name drawn two meetings consecutively, so as to give more people an opportunity to sit in the gallery. I feel it is important to have citizens in attendance so that the council can see the faces and be reminded who they were elected to represent. Thank you for your time and consideration. The next one I have is actually for Mary Jones, and she, I believe, would like to speak for herself. I'll go ahead and unmute her. Mary Jones, you should be able to speak now. Mary?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I had, okay, not used to this microphone. Good evening. On May 9th, 2019, it's almost two years ago, in Fresno Superior Court, a court order was approved regarding Mr. Greg Cody in regard with his relationship with his former friend, Adam Atkinson. On that day, Mr. Cody was informed by order of the Superior Court that he must not only stay away from Mr. Atkinson, but also refrain from a long list of other stuff. I won't list them all, but I will point out two specific actions that Mr. Cody seems intent on utilizing. The court order says, "You must not harass or intimidate or disturb the peace of Mr. Atkinson." So, Mr. Cody persists in sending various communications to the city manager, Colinga, and anyone else he can get to listen to. He's made accusations about supposed actions and occurrences. I haven't seen any evidence. Of course, I'm not in the inner circle, so maybe there is some out there that I just don't know about. But here we are at a meeting, a meeting which later you were on the agenda anyway, going to have a closed session, to which Mr. Atkinson was barred from attending. I'm not even sure how that can be legal, since there is no actual litigation, but only the threat of litigation. That would be like everybody climbing under a desk because there was a threat of an earthquake. No, we don't do it because of a threat. You do it when something actually happens. And in this case, nothing's happened. Just a resident that's grumpy, unhappy, and miserable, and wants to share his misery with other people. So, due to those accusations from a man who's just full of vitriol and hate, he'll go out of his way to spoil anything that doesn't center on something he really likes. Like, he even went out of his way last year to just about this time of year, as a matter of fact, almost to a year to the date. He went out and spoiled an international program that was geared to promote education and growth in youth that were legally here for a good education and a sports experience. But thanks to his complaints, that was nailed. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems kind of shady that there's a specially-called meeting, and this is the second attempt at such a meeting, with the sole intention of talking about this threatened litigation by Mr. Cody. Why is it even being considered? Does legal matters have any standing at all? Because according to this restraining order, Mr. Cody can't do anything about Mr. Atkinson. It's against the restraining order. And frankly, I don't know why anyone gives any credence to this. Is Mr. Cody above the law? Beyond reproach? According to the restraining order, Mr. Cody could be fined $1,000 or spend a year in jail. I'm sure it wouldn't go to that, but legally and technically speaking, that could happen, because he has not complied to the court orders. This isn't just what Mr. Atkinson said, this is what the court said. And here we are, just going our merry way, because Colinga knows better. So, I live in Mr. Atkinson's district. Many of us who live here are well-aware of Mr. Atkinson's involvement and activities. Just this evening, I was at a meeting with other concerned citizens, and who was there? Adam Atkinson. They had their meeting early so that he could be at both places. He's helped coordinate many activities and events and projects. He helped spearhead the revitalization of Neighborhood Watch. He got the K-9 program going. I really don't need to bang Mr. Atkinson's drum, because he continues to do things to make our city better all the time. But for this harassment, as the previous speaker said, it's a bad. It's bad for everyone. It's bad for the people who are allowed to complain, and it's bad for the people who have to listen to it, and it's bad for the people who are targeted. Today, it's Mr. Atkinson. Who will it be tomorrow? Don't let this harassment continue. It's unhealthy. It's a perversion of justice, and it just uses the energy of our city council and city staff, not to mention legal, for ridiculous slander and exaggerated wrongdoings. Pull the plug on this disease. It's up to you, you guys can do this. You can throw this into the trash where it belongs and say, "No more." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, I'll go ahead and continue with the written comments.
Okay.
The next one I have is from Penny Reynolds. I would like this letter read aloud at tonight's regular council meeting. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to start by saying that all the drama that has recently been brought to light once again is a disservice to our community. It's unacceptable. The drama needs to stop. Our council needs to focus on city issues and leave their drama at home. We all are not going to get along or see eye to eye. That is part of life. However, we are all adults. I have not seen eye to eye on many issues with Adam Atkinson. However, Adam has gone above and beyond to help resolve any of my concerns or questions. He does not represent my district, but still goes above and beyond what's reasonable. I truly think Adam cares about our city and has the city's best interests at heart. As a lifelong citizen of this community, I think there are far more important issues than the mayor pro tem bringing a former council member and her spouse's drama to a special meeting. I would like to see the mayor and council focus on what's best for our community as a whole and do what's right for the community and leave their drama at home. We need to get our community cleaned up. Let's make it a priority to get code enforcement and animal control back and address the needs of our city. Colinga was once a great little town that we could be proud of, but with all this drama, this is not something we should be proud of. We all need to act like adults and come together and make our city great again. The next one I have is from Kimberly Chaney. I would like this to be read to the members of the council. As a community member in this town, I am very tired of the Cody/Stoltz vendetta grudge against Councilman Atkinson, which appears to be continuing through the new mayor pro tem, Jim Horn. This second meeting is highly inappropriate and is being instigated by Cody, Stoltz, and Horn, a waste of the city's time and resources. Stoltz is not even a councilwoman any longer and is irrelevant. However, the restraining order against Cody is not. I feel the city needs to put a stop to allowing these childlike vendettas from being a part of our town business. There are many more important issues that need to be addressed. I cannot sit in silence to watch another Cody puppet come on our town's council and cause issues for people who are trying to better this town. We need a council that is for the people and not personal agendas, vendettas, and grudges. Mr. Horn, I'm so disappointed in your actions. Please stop the games and be for the people. Focus on the city issues that matter. The next one I have is from Robin Scott. I want to start by asking each of you to think about how you would feel and how you would react if you were being harassed, bullied, lied about, threatened, your job called or emailed constantly with lies every day or every week of every month for three solid years. Then think about that same person bringing your family into their web. It wears on you. I know this for a fact, and I am still going through it with this frivolous and retaliatory lawsuit Greg Cody filed against a family member of mine. And actually, Mayor Pro Tem knows what was done to me and my family, and he has expressed several times how he does not approve of what's been done to me. He even intervened at my request. Mr. Cody even used Mayor Pro Tem's prior business to stalk and harass another community member as he watched her through the window at Whiskey Town into the grill and did an entire commentary of her eating. Mayor Pro Tem was furious about this and even told Mr. Cody, if he wanted to continue to be allowed at his business, he better never do that again. Getting to my point, Mayor Pro Tem and the rest of the council knows exactly what Mr. Cody does and is capable of. What makes him believe that Mr. Cody is telling the truth now? If ex-councilwoman Stoltz was, is, so concerned for her safety, why are there no police reports or requests for a protection order against Councilman Atkinson? Especially since both Mr. Cody and Ms. Stoltz boast about their friendships with several local officers. Mr. Cody always touts evidence that has anyone been privileged enough to view it, or is he still letting his audience build? Furthermore, unless Ms. Stoltz was a minor, incapacitated, or deceased, Mr. Cody cannot legally file a lawsuit on her behalf. So, why are we here again? Did Ms. Stoltz threaten to sue? If so, why is Mr. Cody's email demand for action being used as a threat of litigation? Councilman Atkinson was granted a restraining order against Mr. Cody. One would think that is proof enough that Adam is the one who was harassed and stalked. They created this hostile environment, and disappointingly enough, Mayor Pro Tem has reignited it. When Mayor Pro Tem first pulled papers to run for city council, I, along with many others, had very high hopes. We were promised a united council with no more shenanigans. I heard through the rumor mill that Mayor Pro Tem was running to get Adam off council. Because we're friends, I asked Jim directly if this was true. He told me it was not. Now, his first two actions as Mayor Pro Tem are against Councilman Atkinson. In closing, I want to say that the only way Councilman Atkinson can be removed would be by recall, and his district would have to vote him out. He has a large constituent base, so think long and hard before being seen as the person who cost the city up to $50,000 for a special election that's bound to fail. The next one I have is anonymous. In order to avoid retaliation by Councilman Adam and his accomplices, I wish to remain anonymous and take this brief opportunity to say that this councilman's blatant dishonorable conduct has been very harmful to our citizens, as well as badly discrediting the integrity of our city council. He uses social media to promote himself politically, while at the same time discrediting others whom he feels inferior. His attacks, unjust and inappropriate public statements towards citizens and city council are a disgrace and should no longer be discarded or disregarded and tolerated. He never accepts responsibility, and should anyone dare mention his attacks or bad behavior, he denies it and retaliates. In doing so, he unleashes his accomplices... In doing so, he unleashes his accomplices to defend him while the vast majority remain silent, knowing they will be retaliated upon just as he did to Mr. Ramsey when he finally attempted to hold him accountable. I have no doubt that history will repeat itself at this meeting. I don't feel I speak alone when I say enough is enough and hopefully city council will take action. Not only to protect the citizens, but city council and staff as well. Thank you for your time and consideration in this serious matter. The next one I have is from Susan B. I'm completely disgusted that this meeting has been allowed to be called. Greg Cody has a history of abuse, harassment, and irrational behavior. His behavior has been so irrational and confrontational that Adam Atkinson had to go to court to get a restraining order to stop the violent threats and stalking that Greg Cody was doing. The council has done nothing to help or protect him. Greg Cody sends yet another complaint to the city and immediately there is a meeting called. Is this the new normal? Anyone can email the city with a complaint and a special meeting will be called? Will all complaints be threatened or treated in this manner? Or only the complaints made by Greg, Cody, and Tanya Stoltz? It is obvious there is a personal differences between these people. Mayor Pro Tem James Horn is now continuing the abuse and harassment of Adam. James is a known friend of Greg's. When is Kalinga City Council going to stop allowing the misuse of power and gross harassment of Adam Atkinson? All of the council members have been elected to do a job and that is doing what is right for Kalinga and the people of Kalinga. Adam has done that. He is visible and constantly keeping people informed of what is available for help or what is going on in Kalinga. Many people have been helped by him, leading them to resources they didn't know were available. What have the rest of you done? Is this special meeting in the best interest of the city of Kalinga? Your own code of conduct states be candid with each other about ideas and feelings and resolve conflict directly. Isn't this meeting a violation of that code of conduct? This is a personal problem that should be handled between these people and it has no business in a council meeting. I'd hoped that getting new people on council would stop some of this. I was wrong. Mayor Pro Tem James Horn, I am completely disappointed that you aren't putting this much effort into your office. I am disgusted that you choose to continue the abuse and harassment of Adam Atkinson. You don't have to like him to do the job you were elected to do. And the last one I have is from Christina Garcia. I am sending this email in regards to the ongoing harassment of Councilman Atkinson. I am in Mr. Atkinson's district and have nothing but praise for the job he has done. He has kept this community informed regarding any pertinent issues. He has sought out our opinion and responded to any concerns that we have in a professional manner. As a member of this community, I find it upsetting that this type of harassment from Greg Cody, Tanya Stoltz, and Mayor Pro Tem Horn continues to be an ongoing issue. The city has more important issues that require the attention of the council. Any personal issues between members of the city council should not be addressed during special meetings or by agenda items. I hope this type of harassment ends. This community deserves better than watching this ongoing saga. Councilman Atkinson, you have my full support and I hope this harassment ends. I would like this email read during today's meeting. Thank you. And I believe we still have a couple of comments from those who are on Zoom. Nathan Bosberg, you can go ahead and speak.
Counsel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so first off, I would like you to thank the council for the action tonight of removing the special meeting. I believe that that was politically motivated. I think that it's unfair that the city supported an order to be drawn up against Mr. Cody and then turn around and take his complaints, which there have been many, many of them, into a special meeting. So far that I know of, the only special meetings that have been held in that aspect has been to discuss the protective orders. And, you know, I know James and I've known Mr. Pro Tem Horn for quite some time. I'd just like to say that I think he's a great person. I really do. I am thinking to myself that he has been manipulated and that's very easy to do. I myself was manipulated by Mr. Cody. I think Mr. Atkinson was also manipulated by Mr. Cody. And I think what happens is, is that you become friends, you send text messages back and forth and then you're in fear that your information is going to be put out there. And I'd like to tell the new councilman up there, Mr. Ramirez and Mr. Horn, please don't be scared of this gentleman or his accomplice. Please don't be scared. I did this for a long time. I did this for a long time. I have hundreds and hundreds of messages from this guy. And you know what? I chose not to go the route of the restraining order. I chose not to do that because I didn't want to cost the city money. But guess what? I did a CPRA report, a request, and here was my question. Any costs to investigations internal and external regarding Tanya or Greg Cody from 11, 2016 to 11, 19, 2021? And this request was clarified to include all non-privileged investigations and legal actions as well. The total cost of these items is $17,395.44. That's what they've cost the city so far that I could figure out in these investigations. These include investigations with city staff members. This includes investigations with police officers. This includes investigations with council members and former council members. This is just costing the city money. Okay, so that's my first thing. I want to thank you guys for removing that and I hope that moving forward that you guys can just drop this whole issue, right? Drop it. You don't need to, this doesn't need to continue on. And second, I would like to have, to personally have a complaint against the city treasurer Dawn DePriest Kahikina. She wrote a Facebook message that was really kind of horrible and it was about the special planning commission meeting. And it says, "A special planning commission has been scheduled. It is so the guideline put in for the marijuana distance to be altered. Our children have already missed messages about our downtime area being compromised. Please let your voice be heard. Get a copy of the information and share it with everyone. Your contacts in every group or agency that has a voice for our children of the underserved, if you want to help preserve any part of what is good in Kalinga, transparency and integrity." And you know what? That's a great thing. I agree. People should voice their opinions. What I don't like is the next part. Don't allow your beliefs told to you to be changed to help accommodate more destruction. Pay attention to who is on boards that are part of and support that addict that brought, fostered, and created this all. The puppet master still has control. So I'm wondering who is this? Because I remember that Mayor Ramsey was the first person to bring someone in and that was ocean grown. So are we, is this saying that Mayor Ramsey is an addict? Or is this really an attack against me and that I'm a puppet master? And I'm not. I'm not a puppet master. I try and influence people. I talk to people. I've talked to every one of the council members up there. And this type of thing has to stop from city officials and it has to stop making complaints and making slanderous remarks towards people. And I just want to put that out there on the record. And so I know you guys have a lot of things to look forward to into getting accomplished and I hope that we can just drop all the slanderous stuff towards people and then we can just move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have one more from Andrea Rosev.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Hello, council. I hope everyone's having a good night. I wanted to call in today because, again, we're here, the same thing. And I feel like it's such a waste of time. Why are we playing these games? It's just ridiculous. Why are we sitting here being petty against one another in a time where we're all suffering? We're all going through things. We have businesses attacking other businesses. We have so many other things to worry about. We have all the issues that everyone has mentioned before me and you guys have a long road ahead of you. And I feel like we really thought this council was going to be different. When did our council become this? Everyone's using their own personal agendas. We have city officials talking outside of things they should be saying, attacking other city officials. It's ridiculous. It's not fair to the citizens of Kalinga. We just want the games to stop. Please focus on the city issues and what really matters for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, is that all of them?
I believe that was it.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much for that. Okay, we'll go to item number four, public hearings. We have none. Number five, we have the consent agenda or the consent calendar. Number one, approved minutes of February 4th, 2021. Number two, approved police department annual ammunition purchase using COPS grant funds. Number three, approved police department's request to add one police officer position. Number four, adopt resolution number 4008 authorizing the police department to enforce parking restrictions on state routes within the city limits. Number five, adopt resolution 4009 designating certain signatures for city bank accounts with Union Bank. Number six, adopt resolution number 410, 4010, formerly adopted in the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan noted at a public hearing on February 4th, 2021. Number seven, adopt resolution 4011 placing the positions of emergency medical technician, non-safety and paramedic non-safety as unrepresented position, not currently subject to any bargaining unit. Number eight, authorize the purchase of three new trucks for public works and utilities. Number nine, information on illegal dumping at the thrift store. Number 10, 2020 annual report. Oh, police department 2020 annual report. Number 11, Public Works Utilities Community Development Monthly Report for January 2021. Is there any items you would like to pull? Okay, I'd like to just to pull number three. Just to talk a little bit. Any other ones?
Number nine.
Number nine. Information on illegal dumping. Okay, Chief, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Darren. Could you explain exactly how you want to do this?
Yes, back in February of 2020 or 2020, I brought before the council a staff report asking for us to be able to hire an 18th position. It was approved by all members on the council. It was not funded during the 2020-21 budget year because of fiscal issues and now we're towards the end. I'd like to bring on, I'd like to bring before the council the request to hire this 18th position and the remaining balance out of the, out of the fund would come, out of the officer's salary would come my COPS grant, which is right around $22,000. So it'd be no funds out of the city budget, general fund. And then next year, we would split the officer's salary 50% from the COPS fund and 50% from the general fund.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, number nine. Who would like to talk about that? Anybody?
Did you have a specific question about it or did you just want an overview?
It's kind of like, you know, I know I brought it to the table and stuff. It's just, I really want to, you know, see what we could do with that dumping that's going on. And not only that, like I mentioned.
Would you make sure that you're unmuted?
I didn't press it hard enough, sorry. It's spreading to Ace Hardware and another local business, two more local businesses. And I wanted to see if we could do something about it. We could bring an ordinance or something that could be done.
So we do have, obviously, illegal dumping is not currently allowed. Unfortunately, we have illegal dumping at several places in the community. I mean, when we send code enforcement violation notices, a lot of times we get calls from the property owner saying, but it's not mine. Someone dumped it there. And unfortunately, if it's on your property, you're responsible for it. And so the same thing sort of applies with the thrift store and it's difficult because they have a lot of illegal dumping. But it's really on them to address it, not on the city. We did include some ideas in the staff report of ways that they may be able to address that. And then, of course, if anyone witnesses illegal dumping, I always encourage them to call the police department. It's hard for them to do something about it after the fact, especially because if people have cameras, it's not always easy to tell who it is. But if they witness illegal dumping, they should call it in at the time they're seeing it. And then the other suggestions that we had in here were just that they may want to consider limiting their drop-off hours so people can only drop off when the thrift stores open. And that way, anytime someone observes drop-offs being done outside of those hours, they can call it in. They may want to hire onsite security or install a motion-activated light to kind of deter people or high-quality cameras. And then, of course, they should report all illegal dumping to the police department.
All righty. So if the, let's just say, if the business doesn't clean up the alley, who cleans it up since it's the city's?
So they're responsible for the alley up to the center point and so it's their responsibility. So if they had items back there that were like trash, we would send them code enforcement violation notices and they have 15 days to correct it. If they request an extension, we work with them. Our intention is not to fine them and cite them. It's to get them into compliance. And so generally, they have 15 days. If they request an extension, we work with them. And then after that, they start receiving citations and it goes to the property owner, not the business. So whoever owns the property. And then they start getting daily citations and fines.
All righty. Is there any way that maybe Midstate or the city could, you know, reach out to the thrift store? And because I know they're spending a lot of money on, you know, that's community money. It's community money that's going to, for cost, for cost. And, you know, I know they overuse now the vehicles to go to the dump site and it's costing, it's costing pretty much money and, you know, it's, and of course, it's right in the center of the town and starting to look horrible. But they do that, they do have a motion sensor. They do have a camera. We just, you know, wanted to see like what we can do to help them and them help us.
So we are, we do have two. Everybody refers to them as free dump days, but that's not what they're really called. We have a spring cleanup coming up and so they can certainly take advantage of that. I know that some people have reached out to Mid Valley Disposal directly and asked if they could have help with disposing of some items. And I don't know if they discounted it or if they helped pick it up or, you know, that's between the business and Mid Valley or the property owner in Mid Valley. I don't know. But I know that Mid Valley is very easy to work with. They're a great asset in the community. They bend over backwards when I ask them for things for the community. And so maybe they could reach out to them and see if that's, you know, they could work something out.
Well, that sounds great. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask the chief a question on that one too. Chief, have we had any reports of illegal dumping there at all?
We have received some reports over the last year, but unfortunately, by the time we get the reports and our officers are free to get there, they're long gone.
Does the cameras help very much at all there?
Some of the times we can catch the people's faces, but even at that, even though we have them on camera, it has to happen in our presence because it's a misdemeanor for us to take action.
Okay. I didn't know that. Okay.
May I say something, please? Why don't?
Yeah, um, there's a sign right there with the penal code that, you know, there's no illegal dumping. But um, they do uh, they do dump it a little bit off the camera towards Ace Hardware. Um, we do have a sign. We do have, they, well, they do have a sign says mattress, TVs recycling. Um, but sometimes, you know, you know, the other person's judgment is the other person's judgment and they'll sit right, oh, well, this is good. But in the long run, it doesn't work or nothing like like a refrigerator. And, you know, it's messed up and it doesn't work. So they dump it a little bit off the camera or they dump it to the nearest business. So, you know, we take the time to get it out of there to, you know, so it won't, so it won't go look terrible because it's, oh, man, it's starting to look terrible. So um, they take the time to to do that. But like I said, it's the money's coming out and barely, they're barely catching up to where, you know, from the COVID. So it it just, it's putting a little bind on them.
I I support the thrift store a hundred percent and I I understand that all them funds all go back into this community and I appreciate that. So I just think by, you know, having the hours to drop off might help that. And then plus two, you know, you can tell them that you don't want it and then they gotta worry about paying because I know dump fees are extremely expensive also.
Yeah, yeah, uh, you know, and a lot of the community has started dumping during the open hours. So, you know, we really, you know, they really appreciate that. Um, it just, sometimes, um, I know there's uh, there's people that clean out backyards and whatever they keep, they keep whatever they're dumping. It's, you know, I guess easier for them, so. But uh, but yeah, but, you know, they 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 try as much, as much as they can, so. But yeah, thank you.
I got a quick, I got a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there, is there any way that they can get rid of the drop boxes and actually move the fence back so that way there is no place to dump in the evenings and keep it more towards during the day, during operational hours?
You you mean the 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 fence?
Entire fence, move it back to the edge of the building against the, against the actual alley street. To keep, to keep that recessed area.
Well, yeah, that's.
From being used.
Yeah, it's 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 already on the on the on the alley. It's the fence.
All the way out now?
Yeah, all the way to to the alley and it just, you know, it's starting to, they putting it in the middle, in the middle of the the.
Yeah, they have a little L-shaped right there.
Exactly, yeah, we.
But they they need to take that L-shaped out of there.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Get just get rid of the whole thing.
Oh, I see, I see.
That way, there's absolutely no area to.
To dump, yeah, because it's mostly the big, big, big stuff that they're doing.
They've asked for uh help before and we've, we've tried to do our best with them with the fences and stuff, too, so. I'll, I'll take this list by a talks to them tomorrow and see, see if that helps them at all or and then maybe look at something, maybe we can do a little bit more and if we have to, maybe we could close the alley right there if we had to.
Alright, thank you.
Close it at nighttime. I don't know how how much we can do that, but if that what, if that's what it takes, we might do that. Okay, um, do I have a motion to accept or uh eliminate any of them? On the consent calendar?
I'll go and make a motion.
Accept?
To accept, yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Mo- uh, motion by Singleton, seconded by Horn. Roll call, please.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
Aye.
Okay, we go to item number six, ordinance presentation, discussion, potential action items. Uh, number one, discussion, direction and potential action regarding staffing code enforcement in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Marissa?
Thank you. So this item was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Atkinson. Um, there is some background information for you that discusses um when the code enforcement officer position was eliminated and what's transpired since then. Um, but really for the discussion, uh, this item on the agenda allows council to discuss options, provide direction and potentially take action regarding code enforcement services. So staff has prepared some um talking points and some options for the council to consider and there's some costs associated with each of those. So in order to staff code enforcement, you could choose to hire a full-time code enforcement officer. That approximate cost is there for you. You could choose to hire a part-time code enforcement officer at nineteen hours per week. You could direct staff to do a request for proposals for outside code enforcement services and there's a cost estimate for that. Or you can continue as is with um addressing complaint-based code enforcement with existing staff. Um, this item is for um next fiscal year, so this cost, there's no cost during the current fiscal year. Um, it would just be starting next fiscal year, which starts July first. And um, I can answer any questions or maybe Councilman Atkinson has some stuff he'd like to add because this was his item.
Yeah, so I'm, I think we're doing pretty good financially. I think we're finally at a point where we can start doing this, getting things that we had before that we don't have now. Uh, I'm not saying that we should do this right away, but I would like to say that um I personally prefer number one in this and I'd like to see us try and put it in the budget for uh our next fiscal year, see if we can um afford it, which I think we will be able to. And uh, see if we can move forward with it uh when we approve of the budget in July, July.
You'll approve it before July, yes.
Maybe June.
June. Yeah, so uh, that's my personal opinion. Um, I think we're we're at a place where we can afford it now. Uh, I know the public is honest all the time about code enforcement and staff really does not have the time to go out. Even today, I went to the uh city manager's office and she was not there because she was working on code enforcement. So I think we're at a place where we can do this now. Um, again, I like to see it budgeted. I don't just want to throw it out there right now, but once we pass uh, or once the budget comes to us, I'd like to see it in the budget.
And possibly some training for the code enforcement, too, because I think they need a little bit of training. Unless, it depends on the personal, we do get in there, you know, so. I agree with you. I think that we're at a time where we can, we've needed this all the time and so hopefully we can afford this and we'll look at it during budget time. And what does everybody else say?
I think Marissa can keep doing it.
Now, we need somebody mean. No.
Um, so I just.
She does a good job.
I really just need direction. Um, so if it's your choice for option number one, which is to hire a full-time code enforcement officer, then when we draft the budget for the first round that we bring you, that's how it will be listed in there. So I just need to make sure everyone's on the same page. If that's not the option that you're interested in, um, I just need you guys to discuss it and then give me consensus on what your preference is.
Well, my preference is to move forward with number one, put it in the budget and yeah.
Yes, full time.
Number one.
Let's go. Yeah, same for me.
Manny, sounds good to me. Number one for everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Number two, uh, discussion, direction and potential action items regarding appointment to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Committee.
Thank you. This is a fairly short item. Uh, staff is seeking council direction on filling a vacancy on the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Committee. Um, and this, the committee is requesting the city appoint a new representative. Uh, currently, those meetings are held via Zoom due to the pandemic. However, they will eventually resume to be in person. So there's information there about when the committee uh generally meets. They're held on the third Thursday of each month at nine AM, generally in Fresno downtown. And it was the mayor and the mayor pro tem um who typically serve on boards. Um, I believe Ron Lander was the city's committee member and former mayor pro tem Ron Ramsey was the alternate. So I don't know if you want to keep that same um approach with the mayor as the primary and the mayor pro tem as the secondary, or if you guys just want to appoint others. So it's just here for you to discuss and then let us know who it is.
I did the last meeting. We went uh on Zoom because Ron was gone. And basically, they told us that uh for right now, it's going to be meeting about four times a year. It's not going to be once a month uh like they used to do, but um basically, uh, there's about forty uh cities involved. And we we all go on Zoom and everybody has their vote and you go through it just like this and uh it's all um through the Brown Act, so it's really, really good. I I've been on to meetings before, but this was my second one. And it was on Zoom and it's really ran professionally, so it's very nice. I'd like to still be on the commission. We could.
Yeah, just keep the same mayor, mayor pro tem.
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with getting involved with it.
Okay.
Same with me.
Yes, please.
Alright, so I make a motion to keep the mayor as the primary and mayor pro tem as the secondary on the Air Pollution Control District Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Atkinson, uh, seconded by Ray uh Ray Singleton. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll go to item number three, discussion, direction and potential action item regarding scheduling of planning commission meetings.
Let me take it. Uh, this was a future agenda item by Councilman Atkinson uh regarding uh the schedules for planning commission meetings. So I'm gonna leave it to Adam to uh, if he has any questions regarding that or what what the issues are and then we can address those.
Right, so um, is there, I'd like to see if there are ways that we can streamline it. So many times we pass something here and it takes weeks and weeks to get to planning commission, then it takes weeks to get back to us. Um, I'd love to see if there are other alternatives that we may have that would help streamline the process. One of the things I think, uh, we we passed something here on a Thursday like today and say planning commission meets next week, you can't get to planning commission because you don't have enough time to make the uh public announcements or whatever, or sometimes there's ten-day whatever. I I'm just looking to see if we can streamline some of these things. Um, we had mentioned something about uh the, what was it? Do you remember what we're talking, we're trying to do the dual um?
Oh, for dual dual noticing?
Yes.
And so, and just to kind of give a little background in terms of, you know, the process from when council makes a decision on or to move forward on something and then actions that are required by the planning commission. Typically, it's land use issues, so zoning amendments, general plan amendments. These are considered larger projects. So it's more, once the council, say, for instance, this zoning text amendment for the distance requirement, it, you know, staff has to notice the public hearing for the planning commission. We, I mean, and myself, I say staff, myself has to prepare the reports, the resolutions, the environmental review, if there's anything related to that. And that has to be completed. Um, and there's a ten-day noticing requirement typically for those types of actions, like zoning amendments or conditional use permits or those types of projects that require public noticing. Um, one of the things that we can talk with um the city attorney is, is what, in what instances we can do joint um noticing, where typically like for a rezone or a general plan amendment, they take, they take recommendations. Planning commission is the recommending body and the council is the approving body. So like anytime it's an ordinance that goes to the council. So you're gonna have a public hearing before the planning commission, then you're gonna have a pu- public hearing before the council. And I think what maybe what you're alluding to is that when you have a planning commission meeting, then you have council within a week. You don't have that ten days in between, so you gotta skip another two weeks because you've got to go there. So there might be some instances where we can notice the po- planning commission meeting because it is a recommendation. And then say, okay, the planning commission is going to meet on February twenty-third and then the council is going to meet on March first. I don't, I may, don't quote me on that. Those aren't actual dates. They probably are, but um, and so we can dual notice it because we have to notice the same people for the planning commi- council meeting. And that actually would help the city, too, because that's less noticing we have to do in terms of mailing out to fifty, a hundred people, depending on who's impacted, um, as well as the additional administrative time to repost those notices. Um, and so I don't know, Mario, I don't want to, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but I imagine there may be some instances in certain projects that would permit us to be able to do that, that will make it easier and that will save us maybe a couple of weeks. I mean, realistically, so I think that's a good, that would be an approach we could take.
Do you think dual notices are legal? I know there's some people who say they are and they aren't.
Yeah, in in some situations, we can do that. The uh, the reason, there's more of a practical reason why it doesn't happen so often is because sometimes the planning commissions, you know, if they, if they want more information, right, you have to kind of punt and then, so then that backs up the council. And it has to, it either has to get addressed that night and kicked out again. I mean, so it's just, it's more of a practical thing than, you know, anything, you know, legally wrong with it.
And we can see, like typically, like if, say, the planning commission makes a recommendation that, say, they they make a recommendation to adjust the distance and recommend different distance, well, we either have to come to the council with that recommendation. If they take that, we don't, we have to almost renotice it because of the fact that now that distance may affect more parcels, right? So then we have to, we have to notice different to the council, because if not, I'm gonna come to you and say, hey, council, it's this, but we haven't properly noticed everybody, so we gotta renotice it and come back to you if you agree with this. So I'd rather just notice it larger, so more people get noticed. And if the, if it goes back to what was originally proposed by the council when you initiated the 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 zoning change, then we're at least we're covered. So there's ways to do that, but there are things like the, like, like Mario said, that can change based on what comes from the commission, based on who we need to mo- notice or what that process is, so. And and a lot of this is in state law and it's, you know, within our own ordinances, but a lot of our ordinances just default to state law in terms of what's required for public noticing. And that's one of the critical things, too, is making sure those notices are out, so. Um, but we, yeah, we can definitely streamline. I mean, save staff time. There there's definitely a positive to try to find those ways, so I'll I'll talk with Mario and we'll look at instances where we can streamline and utilize that.
Yeah, I think especially on like non-controversial items, it'll be, that'll be a good opportunity to to look at that.
No.
Okay. Uh, next is number four, uh, discussion, direction and potential action uh related to removal uh and replacement of trees on Seventh Street between Elm and Forest. Sean?
Mayor and council, this is kind of an extension from last meeting's discussion about Seventh Street. Um, apologize, uh, no fault of anybody in terms of the technical difficulties. I wasn't able to chime in at the last meeting to try to cover this before. So I'll be brief today. Um, but there was some discussion um about the removal of the trees on Seventh Street as part of the scope of work for this particular project. So when staff presented, it didn't include the removal of the trees. Um, however, in, as a, as a recommendation or as a request from Councilman Atkinson, that kind of is a future item to discuss this was to uh consider the removal and replacement of those trees on Seventh Street. They are tearing up, they are pulling up the sidewalks. The tree wells are too small for the types of trees that were planted. So staff um and did reach out to the uh museum just to communicate with them. We did receive a letter. I think the council received a copy of that letter um supporting the removal and replacement of the trees. Um, and so staff basically had the city engineer do an updated cost estimate to include the removal of the trees, the replacement of the new trees, the tree wells and the um, and the air, and the irrigation installation. And so with that additional cost, um, it was about, it ends up being about uh, I think it's thirty-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred, thirty-seven, nine fifty is the additional cost to do the tree removal, replacement, planting and irrigation. Um, and based on the RDA bonds that we had available, it's going to be over by about fifteen thousand. But from what we look, can look at, we can cover that with some of our local street funds. It's pretty nominal amount in terms of the grand scheme of things when it comes to street dollars. So we could cover the difference if the council chooses to move forward with that scope. And that's not gar- that's just based on cost estimates, too, guys. So it's not guaranteed that it's going to be that much. And of course, when this project goes out to bid, then the council will see the the true numbers in terms of what that's going to be. Um, it doesn't, it didn't affect the design costs or the construction engineering costs. It's, it was purely just a cost estimate change for the planting of the trees, the removal and the um replacement of the irrigation, so. Oh, with that, I have that detail in there. We could use Measure C TDA funds um for that additional cost. Um, and we're, we're still moving forward with the engineering. It's just a matter of whether we tweak the scope to include that.
Okay.
And this is something that, uh, the museum board wanted to do, right?
Yeah, from what I can see, they were supportive of the removal, I think there was, and I can admit from staff's perspective, a little bit of apprehension whenever we remove trees. It wasn't as bad as like areas like in front of the fire department or some of the areas where the trees are really bad. However, we always look at it from a sustainability standpoint, that in maybe five, eight years, it's gonna be destroying brand new sidewalk, curb and gutter. So we want to look at, you know, making sure that it's, you know, it's not gonna get any worse, because right now it's getting worse. And also trying to put in curb and gutter and sidewalk with trees that are, that are that large makes it very difficult to pour and form and work around those trees. And a lot of times, trees will end up dying during that process as well. And so in this case, I'd see, I think we can replace the, you know, tear them out and place, replace them with new trees that are more sustainable, that aren't gonna be prone to, um, lifting up the sidewalk. And they weren't installed correctly to begin with. I mean, a lot of times, you know, with the tree wells, the deep root, I can tell they're deep rooted. But a lot of time, when they don't have the right kind of tree guard, the root guards, they tend to grow and they just get big. So.
I, I actually talked to the president of the, um, museum board and he asked for this done, to be done too, because he said some of the trees are starting to get diseased and stuff to it. And they owe it to the people to keep a tree there in, in the memory of a certain people, because those are, those are a lot of more family trees.
Yeah.
So they want, uh, they want to do it right and keep it right and replace them as fast as they can. But, and they know it's gonna be an easier project with them removed and putting them all, everything will be just like brand new. So they're going from scratch, so it'll be a lot better program. And they were, they were, we gave them the, uh, they had a meeting and we gave them what we had at our last meeting. And they were, they were happy about that, so.
And there's plaques that are gonna be pulled out during demo and tracked and they'll be put back in place once the, uh, when the project's complete. So we'll make sure that's in the specifications to include the, make sure those plaques are preserved and put back.
Thank you, Sean.
Problem.
Do we need to?
Yeah, so we're just seeking direction, just to confirm that you're good with the new scope. Um, we'll, we'll put into the budget, um, into the project budget. We'll, we'll have a, you know, extra money in the RDA bond proceeds, so that's gonna spend all of that money. And then whatever, and then the additional fifteen thousand on the estimate. So when we come back to you and we go out to bid, award the bids, then we'll be able to, we'll break it down exactly as to how much additional funds beyond the RDA funds will be available, need to be used.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Okay, the motion was made by Atkinson and the second was by Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Thank you. Okay, we're good. Item number five, council direction and potential action regarding Elm Street improvements between Polk Street and Seventh Street. Sean?
Well, this is a throwback to two thousand fourteen. But, um, there's been some discussion and, uh, Councilman Atkinson had asked some questions related to and requested a future agenda item about, Seventh Street improvements, specifically near the fire department. Um, and, and a lot of the, the sidewalks that we've, we've known for a long time or have been in pretty bad shape. This project was kind of, we provided some cost estimates, scope of work back in two thousand fourteen. This is kind of an extension of the Seventh, uh, the Elm Street improvements, beautification, if you recall. Which started on Elm between Third and Seventh Street, uh, which we completed back in two thousand ten, I think. We proceeded forward with this project, um, for design and some of the discussions related to the trees kind of saw this project kind of diminish. And so this project, uh, I provided some just background on the scope, on the project. I've had the city engineer update the scope a little bit in terms of costs. Um, this, this project scope that I attached is what the previous scope of work was. For, for Elm Avenue between Seventh and Polk, which included new decorative lights, streetlights, removal and replacement of the street trees, and new curb gutter and sidewalk and drive approaches. Um, so as you can see, um, on this, on the scope of work. Uh, but tonight, I just want to provide some background, allow any of the councils to ask questions. I do also have some additional information regarding, uh, depending on, because of the cost is relatively high, we may not be able to do this within the, the coming budget cycle. However, the, the most critical area is in front of the fire department, where we have a lot of major sidewalk issues. Where I have a, I have a scope of work from the city engineer specifically to that. Um, and so we may be able to focus just on that particular location, which I think that's under like two hundred thousand dollars. And that would be, would include the removal of the trees, replacement of the sidewalk, the trees. And then we would run conduit and everything pre-run, so when we do decide to do the full stretch for beautification, like the rest of the sidewalks, lighting, we'll already have all the conduit ran. So then we can, we won't have to go up and tear up any of that new sidewalk. So everything will be basically in place with the assumption that we're going to do the beautification at a later time when we have some additional funds to, uh, to do that. So with that, I'll leave it to the council if there's any other questions or what you guys would like to do.
So the, the, uh, scaled back version that you were just talking about, what was the cost estimate on that and where would we get the funds for that?
So, the cost estimate that I received is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Uh, that'll include basically that stretch, including, I think, the drive approach as well.
Okay.
We would have to look and see, in the current budget, we're pretty tight on the current budget. But we would, we would probably be able to look at adding that into the, the upcoming fiscal year twenty-two budget. Um, once we start looking where our projects are landing and seeing we have new SB one money, money coming in. And so we could probably look and see where we could fault, where we could pull this project in. And there may be some future projects into the fire departments, looking at some projects, um, at the fire department that we might be able to work with to hopefully hone those costs in. To bring those costs more, making more cost effective or larger project to, uh, attract more bidders as well. But I would come back, if the council wants to do something or if they, you have an idea or you'd like the scaled version, I can come back. And as we come closer to the budget, I can bring that back as a budget item and we can try to fit that into the budget.
Yeah, I'd personally like to see it come back in the scaled version. Uh, I don't know if you guys know those sidewalks, but they're absolutely atrocious. And those trees are not sidewalk friendly. And it looks even worse when it's happening right in front of our fire department. It looks terrible for the city. I was over talking with Gerard at Chevron and he says, just watch, watch people walk by, they're gonna trip. And sure enough, people walking by and tripping over the sidewalk. And I think it's a liability, I think it's a liability to the city, um, maybe you could, if someone tripped and got hurt on that sidewalk, is it the city's fault?
Uh, but, by, yeah, it, the sidewalks are a little tricky, because by state law, um, property owners are responsible for the sidewalks. Um, but that also doesn't include the sidewalks in front of city on property, because it's the city's responsibility, so. Yeah, I mean, there's always a potential for that.
And my son has rode his skateboard over there for whatever reason and went flying one time, so. Uh, it's something that needs to be fixed, uh, hopefully sooner rather than later. Uh, the scaled back version seems a lot better than the whole seven hundred something thousand dollar version. But I'd like to see us move forward with that.
I got, I got one more. Along that same street, right there at the corner of Elm and Polk, on the south side facing Autozone, there is a chunk of the sidewalk that is lifted there. This week, I have seen the same person riding their wheelchair down that sidewalk right there and tumbled over.
So on the corner?
Twice this week.
On the corner, on?
It's between the driveway, yeah, on, on, it's more on Polk Streets, between the driveway and the corner of Elm and Polk. It's on the sidewalk.
On the south side, so on the, on the Autozone side?
Yes.
Now that's all being, a lot, some of that will be replaced, but we, we can take a look though.
It's lifted.
If I may?
This was just this week.
One moment, hey. Um, so that has actually been flagged to be fixed by Precision Concrete. We hope to be starting work, uh, fairly soon, so that's one of our zones to, uh, to get shaved down.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Yeah, no, they've been, they've completed their analysis, uh, Precision Concrete. Uh, they're the ones that are doing the shaving down of all the lips. Uh, they finished all of District Two and they've been, Larry's been going through the report from them. So as soon as that, we kind of pick out what's being done in other projects. We're gonna send them on their way to go ahead and start shaving down all the, all the lips in District Two, probably. I'm trying to, and maybe within the next few weeks, potentially. So that, and it sounds like that's one of them that'll take, get taken care of, so it's in the works.
Okay, those ones that are being shaved down, is Precision going around and painting, painting them right now?
No, they're just inspecting.
Because some people have been saying that they're, they've got sidewalks in front of their house, somebody came over and painted. Uh, and it looks, and I said it might be the, the Precision guys, so I don't, I didn't know for sure.
It might be, but I think you would see a lot more of it, because there's a lot of lips that they have to replace or they have to fix, so.
There was something like two thousand?
Yeah. It's a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, so what do you need, a consensus here or?
Yeah, so, I mean, I didn't provide the scaled version, because I just wanted to have it available for, to, for the sake of discussion. So it's, you know, under two hundred thousand, but if you guys are comfortable with just, let's just say for the, for the budget, let's look at a project in front of the fire department to replace the sidewalks and the trees. Is that pretty mu, is that a consensus of the council for that? Okay, then we'll just do that and we'll be back, sorry, we'll bring back a project or at least a budget for that project. Once approved, we'll move forward with getting the task orders and start moving forward on the project.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um, we go to announcements now. City manager, any announcements?
Uh, I just want to remind everyone that there is, uh, the Joan Ayers Beeson Scholarship available right now. It's on the city's website. Uh, that application period closes March first. It's probably been open for about six weeks now and we got our first application in today. Um, so that deadline is March first, um, the information's all on the city's website. It's not just for seniors and high school that are graduating, it's also for existing college students. Um, I believe the only requirement is that you have to have lived in Kalinga at the time you were born. Um, and then there's the application on the city website if anyone's interested.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I have no other announcements.
Okay, council members, uh, announcements or reports?
Councilman Singleton and myself will be meeting with our senator, uh, next week, I believe. Uh, we'll be talking about the CARES Act and several other issues that are important to Kalinga. Uh, looking forward to that. Hopefully, we can try and get that CARES Act money back to Kalinga. There may be two senators in that meeting and possibly more, we'll see.
Okay, which, which ones are you meeting with, Dino?
Possibly Hurtado.
Okay, because, uh, Valadeo's, um, got a gentleman, uh, trying to get some meetings with us too. He wants, he wants to do meetings through Zoom and then maybe, uh, talk to the, uh, Senator also, I mean, not Senator, Congressman, also. Okay, uh, mayor's announcements, I have none. Uh, I'm sorry, did you have something to eat, Manny?
Yeah, I just, um, I wanted to thank Marissa, uh, for reaching out. We're, you know, one of our individual community, you know, citizens here. Um, she posted and helped out and I hope she got help. And, um, you know, that's, that's, you know, very uplifting that we, that we have individuals all over the, the town about, you know, that care about one another. Also too, I wanna, I wanna, um, thank, uh, one of our police officers for, uh, for going out there to the football field and talking to, to, to the football kids. You know, just encouraging them that not just football, when football's over, that they still have a future to think about and that anything is possible for them. And that was very uplifting and I really, really thank, and I'm, this is one of the things why I got to council, because, you know, we have a great police department and for him to go out, you know, and just sit out there and watch them and they just felt great. It lifted their, their souls playing time and, you know, I just couldn't thank them, you know, anymore. So I just, I just want to do that. And, um, also too, I wanted to, uh, I don't know if I could do it on this, bring up future agenda?
Yeah, that's coming up next.
All right, other than that, um, you know, I'm just still learning and I'm still, I'm liking it.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, just, just for the, um, the five city councilmen sitting here, uh, tonight wasn't, uh, uh, a pleasant night for us. But what we need to do as, as five of us sit here, we need to take our focus to the city and not on ourselves. Uh, we were elected to do a job and that's what we should be doing. All of our past differences, dislikes or whatever, we need to save that for another day when you're not sitting up here. Because if we're not gonna represent the city, we shouldn't be sitting in these chairs. And that goes for all, all five of us at any given time. I mean, so if we can't get it together, we need to take a step back, do what you gotta do. But if we're not gonna represent the city and the citizens, then we're doing no justice to anybody here. So let's move forward in a positive direction, you know?
Okay, I got something to say. Actually, I got a couple of things to say. First thing is I agree with Ray. Second thing is, within the last two weeks, I had to utilize the, the new hospital, the one that just reopened. And just so everybody knows, they're out there, they're extremely thorough, extremely thorough. They did their job, they did it quick, found the problem with my child. And also I'd like to give a shout out to the Kalinga Fire Department for taking care of my daughter and how they treated her, uh, on the trip over there. And when she got there, they made sure she was safe before they left. And the next day, they even got ahold of me just to make sure she was still okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to future agenda items.
Yeah, I, I, I got one, um, I discussed it, uh, before about that, uh, trying to get a stop sign on, uh, once again, Glen and Pine. I believe, um, just the other day, my dad almost got hit in his car. Somebody didn't yield or nothing and I would like to see if we could get a stop sign there. It is getting really ridiculous and just to see my dad almost get T-boned it, I, I, you know, and that's just not, just for my father, but it goes for everybody. You know, because if school starts again, um, that little bus that, that, that stops right there for some of the students, it just, it's, I mean, if you sit there, you'll see every car going by and not stopping. And I would hate an accident to happen and somebody gets severely injured. So, um, if we can look into that and, and get a stop sign there.
It's already in the works and we, we're put, Larry's putting together kind of a little exhibit for us. And then we're gonna, we're gonna provide that to the council at the next council meeting.
Thank you so much.
It's already in the works, yeah.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Okay, I, I just want to remind people too that stop signs mean stop. And, uh, there's a stop sign right across the street from my house that, uh, it's my own neighbors. Everybody, uh, they go, drive right through that stop sign. And luckily, we don't have any little kids playing right there, but some kids could get, uh, ran over right there and that would be the last thing we would want. So stop means stop. You don't have to stop for a long time, just stop and then go again. That's why we put the stop signs there. I have a future agenda item, I'd like to, uh, to ha, just have an overview of the, um, the airport. There's a lot of lights out there that are broken and we need to get them fixed. And, uh, the, um, uh, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be looked at and stuff and, um, so I've turned in a list, uh, that I've gotten from people. Uh, so we won't, need to look at that and, uh, see what needs to be fixed. And I think we've already received some money to fix some of the stuff, but we haven't fixed it yet, so. Like to see us, uh, look over that and then maybe, maybe use our, uh, start using our, our airport for a lot more things. You know, not just the races and, and, um, start advertising it out there. We, our pumps right now, we have a gas, we have gas pumps out there, but they don't work right now. So that, that's a big deal that we used to bring a lot of people in. And, uh, so we need to look at that and like to see that come up on the agenda.
I was gonna actually do the same thing. Um, I had some people reach out to me too, some of the pilots, and I've got an entire list of some issues. So if, if anything, I'll get with him and then send them, send them to you.
Yeah, so you, you can give it to the mayor or you can just give me the list directly.
Yeah, Shannon, Shannon already has it, I think, yeah. I think it's the same one, so. So we'll make sure. Anything, anybody else?
Um, oh, yeah, go ahead.
No, good. Good.
Okay, um, sorry, um, just another one, it reminds me of being in that, in that, uh, area over there. Um, can we get information as much as we can with that railroad bridge? Um, the other day, I was jogging and I saw one of the kids, me and, uh, Mr. Atkinson have been there and looked at it. I have, uh, pictures of it, but, um, a little kid was already leaning on the fence and, you know, I had to kind of tell him, hey, no, 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 like, you know, it's, 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 um, very weak and, um, we really need to look at that and I don't know if we have. Um we really need to look at that, and I don't know if we have already, but um.
I think that's something that uh we can work on, we, we did previous before you were on council, and the, the problem that we're running into was it's private property. But I think me and you can figure out a way to get around that, um I have some ideas, so we can talk about that, I've been talking with Ruben too out there.
Okay, okay, yeah, that'll be, yeah, that'll be great.
There's some ways I think we can do that, um the city is gonna have a difficult time, because it's private property, but yes, there are some things that we can do about that.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be great, yeah, because it's, it's really getting in, but with this rain, it got even worse. So um yeah, we could get as much information we can, or reach out or do something, and it'll be really grateful, thank you.
Look, it's been a rough day, um it's been a rough few days. Um going off of what Ray said, you know, we, we need to come together and, you know, we need leadership, and. It's not fair to me, it's not fair to my family, and it's not fair to the people of Kalinga for what's been going on. And this is a huge learning curve, this job, it's not easy to just walk in here and know everything that goes on, it takes years, I'm still learning, I'm on my third year. But I can't keep worrying about things like this all the time, it takes a toll on me, it makes me wanna resign. I told people I was gonna resign, I just had enough, but um look, I think, I think that there's some change that needs to happen. In order for us to come together as a council, and I am gonna ask for the uh reorganization of the Mayor Pro Tem seat. And I will say right now that I will not accept that position uh myself.
Can I say something, please?
Pardon me?
Am I allowed to say something?
Yeah, go ahead, I'll let you.
Mr. Atkinson, I say this with all due respect, this stops when you stop playing a role in it, two wrongs don't make a right. I support what you do when you're doing good, but when you're doing bad, I don't, and as a citizen of this community, I don't appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, uh we're gonna go into closed session, we've got two items. Uh one, real property negotiations, government code, section five four nine five six point eight. Conference with real property negotiators, property APN zero eight five dash zero two zero. Dash five eight T, located off Jane Avenue and Highway thirty three in the city of Kalinga. City negotiators, city manager Marissa uh Trejo and city attorney Mario Zamora. Negotiating parties Cal Becker and, and or assigned under negotiations, price, term and payment. Number two, conference with labor negotiations, government code five four nine five seven point six. City negotiators, city manager, uh Marissa Trejo, city attorney Mario Zamora. Employee organization, non-representative employees. Will be, there will be a report afterwards?
There might be on number one, um it's, it's possible.
Okay. Okay, with that, if nothing else, this meeting is adjourned, thank you for attending.